So.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Good. We have, with the board's permission, I want to change the agenda around a little bit. We have several items in new business which I think will be fairly quick, and I think we can buzz through them, then go back to the agenda. That's all right with you? I was thinking of items A through D.
It's fine.
Is that all right with you guys?
Yeah.
All right. First item, appointments. IF&amp;W agent Anthony Muffy.
I'll make that motion, second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, Anthony.
Another job for you.
Motor vehicle agent, Nick Poole.
I'll make that motion, I'll second that.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? GA Administrator, Kenny Ketchell.
Well, this is going to be a little bit of gray here.
Yeah, all right.
Is it?
No, I didn't hear it.
I got it. Can I ask Kenny something on it? Are these all your recommendations? Okay. I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Motion.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? GA Assistant Melanie Alexander.
I'll make that motion, second.
Made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
That was easy.
That was easy. Okay. Item B, per diem firefighter slash EMS provider job description. Have you all had a chance to look at that?
Yeah, I had one question.
What's that?
On the, on the experience and qualifications, it said you had to be a firefighter one certificate. I'm just wondering why. For an EMT.
You can, you, I can find out the answer to that. This was put forward by the EMT rescue folks.
I understand.
So I could.
I think I know the answer, but you're single out of other people. Because I mean, some of us, and I'm going to just say on myself, I mean, I'm not a firefighter one, but I'm an EMT. Been a firefighter all my life, and, you know, you kind of single people out that way.
Is it the per diem, Ricky?
Yeah.
And it's, it's basically over days that service is off?
I know what it is.
Okay.
Again, if I wanted to go cover that day, I can't do it under this. I'm just using that for an example, not that I'm going.
No, but it's a point. If you want me to bring that up to them or something.
I'd like to just see what they're, I know what they're.
See what they can do without that certification required.
Right.
Do you feel we need to answer that before we can vote on it?
Well, if it's going to be changed, I would think you would have to, but that's up to you, I mean, I.
There's no rush to prove it now.
No.
They put it forward, we can.
That's the only question I had on it, and it, and I just, I've seen it in a couple of other towns, and it singles out some people, and.
Well, it, it, there was appeals, what you said.
Yes, it does. You know, you know.
Do you have a motion to table?
I'll make that motion, yes.
Any, any, a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded to table. Until the next meeting, can you come back next meeting, have the question answered?
Yeah.
We'll have it answered.
All in favor?
I guess the thing we might want to point is, if there really isn't needed, do you want to remove it?
Yeah, I mean, if it's not really.
Just have it, based on what, whatever they recommend.
If you're running a full-time department, yes, that comes into effect. If this is not run with a.
Okay.
There it is. Transfer station proposed fee increase. That was in your packet also. Don't get a chance to see it. Questions on it?
I don't think your boat ones are high enough still.
Now you don't think so?
I may have weighed one of those, see what they really weigh.
No.
We don't really have really.
I know, I'm just.
You proposing to change that?
Well.
What's your recommendation?
I think, I think.
I say, I, I know your.
I know what my recommendation is, not to take.
Right. Well, if you are, what's your recommendation?
I think you ought to up the price on it. I don't know, you know, I'd like to know what one weighs. These boat guys can tell you, because they know how much they weigh. I mean, I'm just wondering if this even covering our cost is what I'm after.
That's my question.
Well.
Well, nothing's really covering our cost. Nothing that we're taking is covering the cost. With, I mean, I, I don't know, because you don't know what it weighs and what we're actually, it really, honestly.
I know, and then, we've had this discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is a whole lot, I mean.
It's a lot better than what you had.
It's a lot better than what we've been doing.
I guess I don't have a problem with it, but I just think we need to, I think we need to investigate this more, because if we're not, this is pretty inexpensive to get rid of a boat. It's out, well, I'll leave it.
You want to just exclude that one item and table that one item and throw in the rest of the ordinance?
I don't think, I don't think they can come up with that, I mean, without doing a lot of research on it.
I mean, each boat's going to be different.
That's right. I mean, they take up a lot of room, too, as, as we know.
Well, once we crush them down, they're not, they're not quite so bad.
Some of them.
They do crush down pretty well.
I just want to know what they weigh.
What's your pleasure? Are you ready to vote on it, or no?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's better than what they had, but I just think it needs further.
Good start.
Yes. Yes.
And have a motion then, please.
So be it.
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Belgrade transfer station agreements, Rome and Mount Vernon are the same, so we'll read them together. You all, this is, they're basically the same, they haven't changed, are they not?
Yes, they're, they're the same.
Kenny had it.
On the agreements, first of all, on the post-fee increases, don't they require a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so when you approve that, you approve them to go to public hearings, is what I wanted to make sure. That, I knew that, Bruce, I just wanted, I was asking a rhetorical question.
You reminded me, I'd forgotten that.
On the Belgrade.
That was, that was in my motion, in the motion, you didn't hear that.
Yeah, you just didn't hear that.
Oh, I was out trying to answer the E911 phone set up that we got going. In both of these agreements, right, there are rules that authorize the board to do this. The rules are subordinate to the ordinance. The ordinance say that, the current town ordinance has written, currently says that only refuge or waste generated in the town of Belgrade can be disposed at the facility. Now, what I'm proposing is that, because you've had these, and it's been in rules, and no one has questioned it, I'm proposing that you direct the town manager to work with the transfer station committee to come up with an ordinance change that will go out the vote in November, and allow these to go forward. But, but that's the situation that we're currently in.
I was going to say that same thing, you know, good, good job. I'll make that motion.
That motion to have any word of the transfer stations.
We're going to vote on this, so in the meantime, we're going to, we're going to, we're guessing the.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you'll come back with.
And the only other, the only other point I would make, and I meant to talk to Ken, but I, I'm sorry, Ken.
That's fine.
I didn't get to you, is under, primarily, when this was originally set up, it was for recycling purposes, and I noticed that we allow them also dispose of tires, large plastic items, et cetera, et cetera, and I don't know if we're recovering our costs, I got to answer this one.
Take a little break. Take the phone off the hook, Dennis. This wasn't set up for recycling purposes, that was a separate deal.
Well, I think we.
We agreed to take on the trash, the garbage.
We're trying to. They're trying to set up E911, because E911's going down for the 495 numbers today, sometime tonight, and that's a Fairpoint phone, and they're trying to set it up through that, and we're trying to work that out, so I'm sorry. So, my only question there was, it's added into these agreements where you can get rid of these wastes for these prices. Ken, I just don't know whether we're recovering our costs.
On the tires, we are. The, the other costs, they pull right in with our other increases.
Yeah.
The tires.
So would we be recovering all these costs from these towns? Because if we're not, then town of Belgrade is, you know what I'm saying?
It's staff, but we're going to recover 100% of the costs.
Yeah, so I don't know how much of these are being brought in. I should have talked to them before, but.
It's, I'll tell you, it's minimal.
Ernie?
I, I thought the agreement was that we would accept stuff into the hopper and recycling. I didn't realize that we'd made an agreement to accept couches and all that other stuff for long.
Oh, yeah, the, the price schedule is attached to the, the agreement with both Mount Vernon and Rome.
It's attached to, attached to the inter-local agreement?
Which is, which is the same, same fees that Belgrade residents are paying for that type of stuff.
Yeah, but we're paying taxes to support the transfer station, and I think, my understanding, as I recall, and again, I know we approved the agreement, but I think we should talk about this a little bit. I don't think we should be accepting couches and, I don't think we should be accepting those things, because we already know that it's costing us money to get rid of that stuff, and fees that we've been collecting aren't covering it. So, the taxpayers are picking up the tab, and we give them the benefit of being able to use the transfer station, because it is their transfer station. But these people.
I agree.
So I think we should.
No, it's the only thing that we're, that we're getting, that we're covering is tires.
Well, that's right.
They can't get in the blue bag.
Well, the only, one reason we didn't accept the recycling stuff is because recycling stuff.
Recycling, recycling, but tires and couches is not recycling.
Right, tire, or as I said, tires we are, we are covering, excuse me, tires we are covering. Our cost.
They haven't set up yet.
Everything else.
Set up. Okay, if you grab that.
So, so sectionals, box springs.
Kenny. Howard.
Why do we have an agreement for something like that, which is not clearly covering if not parts, partially padding our costs? It just seems ridiculous.
I think all of us, all of us had, apparently been really close enough, but we felt we were talking about garbage and recyclables, period. And that's really, in my opinion, that's what the agreement should be limited to, tires and all this other stuff.
And I really apologize to Ken, I just didn't get a chance to call him on this.
Well, it's all right, we're having, we're having a discussion, it's open discussion, it's just, we just need to come up with what's going to be best for the taxpayers, really, because we don't want to be subsidizing somebody else's waste that our transfer station.
I agree.
It would hurt you in any way if we cut out those items?
That will, I don't think that will affect us in any way. Extremely minimal, the stuff that.
I'll make that, how should we do that? Motion's been made to exclude, how do we identify those items?
The only things we'll accept from Rome and Mount Vernon, other than the recycle, is the stuff that goes in the bags that go into the hopper. Here we go. That's it.
Thanks.
Anything outside of that will be null and none.
That's your motion?
Yep, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Made and seconded, and would the town manager see those corrections are made?
We will, and, and I'll work with the committee to come up with an ordinance change to be putting, put on their warrant for November.
We had two, we actually had two motions here. We had the first one to have you do the, write up something for the ordinance, and it was moved and seconded, so you want to take a vote?
We didn't take a vote on that, okay. Voting on the first one to have him, have the town manager go back with the committee, all in favor? Okay.
Jeff, get his hand, yeah.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do the out-of-town people, Rome and Mount Vernon, pay by the bag?
Yeah.
Yes.
They do.
They pay $2 a bag.
What do they pay?
$20 per 10 bags.
How much?
$20 per 10 bags.
We have them here in their colors.
And we don't really sell that many, it's really for people that live closer to this transfer station.
I think our total sales was $600 and changed last year.
All right, now this other, the other motion is.
Yeah, Rick made it to change it, and I seconded it.
The stuff that goes in the garbage bag and recyclables.
All right, any other discussion on that item? Ernie? All in favor? Thank you. That's good. Now, we'll go back to the order. We'll go to the oldest, which is Friends of the Belgrade.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Kenny. Friends of the Belgrade Lakes Village. Carol, you're on.
Yep, okay. My name is Carol Johnson, and we pulled together a bit of a PowerPoint for you, which will project on the back wall here. And what we're, what we're attempting to do is to talk about the, the brick installation, the maintenance of it, and to, well, we have a proposal in the escrow fund, because that's one that we're trying to, you know, lock down and check one more thing off our list. I do have a few copies of the presentation, for those of you who are here, if you, you want them, you may have to share them, if you're not sure. Anyone, you might need a copy, or you can let us know afterwards. We have a few to share.
Go ahead, Carol.
So, whoops, so guests tonight with us, we have Ernie Martin, who's a project manager on this. We have Ken Cooper, who's the transportation landscape architect, and this is the fun part, because we get to see how to make it look pretty once it's done. And we also have Ron or Rod?
Ron.
Rod Blaisdol, and he's going to be working the next, this week or next week on meeting with individual property owners. If I'd known you were coming, I would have put your name on the slide. So, this is not your grandfather brick sidewalk, we've all seen the old sidewalks and worried about them in the past. Older brick sidewalks installed in the 70s, Hollowell and Portland have some of those, have lasted around 50 years. New installation techniques minimize the maintenance costs and maximize the lifespan compared to other materials. Asphalt sidewalks require comprehensive maintenance for long cracks, because when they do crack, they, they tend to crack a longer way. And chipping while bricks allow repairs to be isolated to one or two bricks into a small area if you have a root that happens to come up through. The asphalt sidewalks paid for by the town, which is, would be the town's obligation if we weren't doing the brick, would need replacement in 10 to 15 years, based on the information we've been given. Brick sidewalks, which the Friends of Belgrade Lakes Village are paying for, should last up to 75 years with little routine maintenance. So what I'd like to do is just walk you through the process of sidewalk installation. And fortunately, they happen to be installing some brick sidewalks, actually in Portsmouth, so I've been able to get you a slide of each level, so you can see how it goes. There is a link here, it's a probably five or eight minute link talking about brick installations and so on. And if you want it, I can send this to someone if they just want to click on it, or you can type all those in if you want to take it off our sheet. So, the roadbed's excavated to whatever the appropriate engineer depth, Ernie can tell us how far that's going to be, maybe. 10 inches of new type B gravel fill is added, and then the whole area is compacted with heavy equipment. The granite curvings installed with a seven inch reveal, and the interior edge, they're securing with a steel pinned, heavy plastic backing edge. And this is just a picture of one that has the gravel in, and the gravel's been compacted, so it's ready for the next step. After they do that, they put in a two-inch asphalt layer, and that's laid down over a compacted gravel base. This picture just shows them as they're in the process of doing that. After that, there's a one-inch layer setting base, and the sand to cement ratio on that is six to one. And if you have questions on that, someone here can help me out on the engineering piece. Whoops. And then after that, the bricks are laid flat over the setting base. So you can see a picture here of the bricks that have now gone in, they're leveled with granite curving. And then, after that, clean sand is swept into the joint. So, once they get the bricks down, then they sweep the sand in. So there's a leveled, hard, compacted base, the asphalt, and then this goes over it. So the projected repair costs, Ken's done a lot of work for us. He's spoken to several towns regarding the maintenance and upkeep of their brick sidewalks, and has been told by those towns it's not a particular concern. He spoke with Hollowell Gardener and the Gunkwet public health directors, and they all cited, you know, a couple of $1,000 is the simple answer to the annual costs, or a couple of guys for a couple of weeks as needed was the gardener answer. And all of these towns have substantially larger brick sidewalks than what we have. We're going to have 2,000 linear feet. The important factors causing sidewalk problems are older sidewalks, retriever issues, failures due to poor maintenance or subsurface utilities, or poor initial installation and repairs. And I think it's in Freeport now, where they're basically going back and digging up some of the sidewalks they installed without this compacting and asphalt underbase, under the edge, putting in new ones with the new techniques. Ken's been told that Portland would allocate about $1,000 a year for annual repairs for comparable sidewalk to what we're going to have. And just to note again, that we have, we're going to have about 2,000 linear feet of brick sidewalks when we're completed. This is a really, really hard one to read. I know the select board has it in their packages, and we have a print here. This is just showing again more of an engineering design of how this is done. And I believe this is done for the city of Portland and the city of Boston, use these same techniques, am I right, Ken?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, going back to bricks, bricks are easy to repair. Sometimes you can just flip them over, if you get a chip, that's a big chip, you can just take it out and flip it over and put it back in. Most individual bricks can be reused or just reset. Many sections of our sidewalk, we have so many driveways and so many openings, that if there is something that's major, it's going to be in an isolated area, because it's not like a big, long piece of concrete that can split. So they're relatively short segments, and this is our question talking. So, essentially, the driveway entrances, the brick will be hot glued, cemented in place, which will also increase the durability, because the way they'll be, have to be installed as you go in and out of all the driveway openings that will have. And the driveway openings will be asphalt. And then the last one just brings us to our proposal. And we've talked with, you know, worked with Kent and DOT on this, that we are proposing to establish an escrow account for town of Belgrade, in the amount of $10,000, to be used exclusively for the reasonable maintenance and repair of pedestrian lighting brick sidewalks. And that's the project number of this particular project. We will agree to maintain this account through 12/31/2028, which is the 10-year period. And any remaining funds, and we expect there will be quite a bit left, will be gifted to the town for future maintenance and so on at that point. And then, knowing that something could always go wrong, should for any reason this count be depleted before 12/31/2028, we agree that we will pay any reasonable cost and excess of that initial $10,000 should be depleted within 30 days of the billing. So, that is, that's what we have for proposal. Are there any questions that either myself, or Ken, or Ernie can answer?
Ken? Ken?
Yes.
This, this installation will be overseen by DOT?
Correct.
And is this installation procedure different than, than we've seen in some of the older installations?
The older installations, or what, Carol just?
Old, the, some of the old, not, not talking about what's being done today.
Right.
But some of the older installations we might see around the state, would, would that procedure follow?
Yes, I think that probably is true. And I think it's the infrastructure underneath urban sidewalks that's probably really the problem. Plumbing companies, electric companies, telephone companies go into towns and repair things all the time. And those are probably the things that in an urban area are, are the worst things that damage sidewalks, because they don't get repaired properly. Things aren't compacted, but everybody thinks it was fixed, because the bricks are back. And that just keeps getting worse. I do think in a, in a very engineered project built with highway equipment, it's going to be a very, very durable brick sidewalk.
What do you think of the 10,000, 10-year proposal?
Well, I'm not a banker guy. It sounds very reasonable to me, and it's consistent with, with what other towns have. I mean, I asked Al Gunkwet, where they had sidewalks that were 30 years old, and that were very corroded. They had old trees, they had potholes in them. They said, oh, it wasn't that big a deal. If they needed to do a little repair, it's sand and cement, and you flip some bricks around and make it smooth.
Thank you. Anyone ask?
Yeah, I just wonder, is Hollowell replacing its sidewalks as part of the project of redo the highway through downtown?
Ernie can answer that, because he has that project in his.
Yes, he are, yeah, they're doing the same, same treatments here. The, the bricks that were placed in Hollowell were placed in 1978. So, by the time we get to next, next spring, probably '17, so those have been there for 45 years, and they are mongrel in nature. Because when, when anybody went in to repair them, they used sand, they used cement, they used Batumis pavement, they used all kinds of applications, so when you, when you, when you do that, then you start allowing water and everything else to get in underneath and start undermining, and that's really what happened to Hollowell, is that they kept piecemeal and stuffed together with different variations of treatments.
But I would assume that the, the replacement for the high, for the, of the brick sidewalk is actually being improved by the housing, is that, not just because the sidewalks needed to be replaced?
Correct, the, there is an accommodation policy, as we have in here, 80%, 20%, 80% on the state and 20% on the municipality to do those brick sidewalks. They've actually added some brick sidewalks as part of the contract, too. So they're taking the opportunity to add lighting to the other side, to the west side of Water Street, and upgrade further sidewalks with bricks in town as well.
Yeah.
Ken, I got, let me just ask. Is the qual, Ken, is the quality of the bricks being used today specifically this project better than what was used 50, 60 years ago? Are they hotter?
Well, again, I'm not a brick expert, but yes, they're, they're using state-of-the-art cones that fire at 2,800 degrees or something. They're, yes, they probably are.
Danny, do you have something?
The question I have, when you lay the bricks in, then there's seams, and you put the sand in. The question I have is, I have bricks, and ants come and take the sand out, and it creates problems. I understand that there is a mixture that you can do with sand, that you can spread, and then it seals it, and as it moist, gets wet, it hardens. Is that something that's been thought about?
Well, is that part of that six to one cement to sand ratio?
Well, that's in, that's in. That's in the base that the bricks set on, it's not the, it's not in the sand that fills the cracks. It's going to be pretty well sealed off, but it's about, it's about a point. You know, you do have insects that'll very big sand up, but over the course of time, when it rains, it washes back in. Water infiltrates.
I, I think you may be asking about a polymetric sand or something, and I'm really not familiar with it. I've seen it marketed most of my own.
It's not a huge issue, I just was wondering if someone had thought about it, or if it was just, because you put the underlay, and that kind of prevents some of the insect issue.
Correct, although we're going to have two inches of asphalt there, so I think that takes care of.
No, that's what I'm saying, that may be.
I think that's even better.
I do have a, so you're using brick bricks, not cement bricks, correct?
Correct. They're much more durable, they're stronger, they wear better.
Okay.
They're wired, like, like a piece of pottery.
Ernie?
The, the numbers are fine, by as I'm concerned, and based on the agreement that is in place and has already been checked out without legal and everything else, there's nothing above 10 years, so. The little last thing that needs to complete that contract was how many dollars, and we were to set that number, and my recommendation is we accept the $10,000, but we don't accept any new contracts. Because the contract we have in place is what we worked on and got in place, and then we left it, that we would accept, or we would negotiate the dollar amount. And based on what we're hearing here, I believe the board sounds like we're comfortable with the $10,000 number.
You weren't asking for a new contract, were you?
I'm sorry?
You weren't asking for a new contract, were you?
No, we're just asking for an agreement, so we know what we have to budget and turn over to the town.
But we can, the vote here will take care of that.
No, there's no new agreement, Mike, we have the agreement. It's, we, the, the agreement is left, and we need to accept whatever, we set the dollar amount. That's all we're going to do, we're not going to do a new agreement.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I think, if I understand. Yeah, and I think, if I understand the presentation, they're, they're asking you to accept the ten thousand dollar amount, and any additional sum, if you need more, to be paid, billed within thirty, to be paid after a billion.
That's really all we're doing.
So it's just setting the amount, with that, a little addition on it.
It's not actually, not actually an agreement in a sense.
So it's fulfilling the obligation.
Well, the ten-year statement has to be removed. By state law, because our agreement does not say ten years.
It didn't say anything.
Well, it does. It's perpetual. It was checked by our legal, and that was part of the issue that we had, was who was gonna be responsible for these sidewalks? And we were gonna come up with what was left, after everything is signed and agreed to, which has been done, and we was gonna agree to a number. Initially, we was looking at a hundred thousand dollars, which obviously is not required. So we're now down to accepting, setting the number at ten thousand dollars. And I don't have the agreement in front of me, but.
And he's, we're, we're looking at ten years, other than, if they were asphalt sidewalks, that is what the state would provide, that within ten years they would need repairs, that the town would be responsible for. So we're looking to step in and make sure that the town doesn't pick up any other costs until such time when they normally would pick up costs, which would be, you know, within that ten or fifteen-year period.
Yeah, I, I don't remember any time period being mentioned, do you have the agreement?
I can find it.
I don't remember, and you might be right, but I don't remember any time period being mentioned in the original agreement. Anyone else why he looks for it?
No, I'm fine, let's get this thing done. Beat this thing to death.
All we gotta do is accept, all I'm saying is, we accept the ten thousand dollars, that's what we, that's what we agreed to do. We don't accept any new agreements. Whatever the agreement is, it's in place, and it's, and if it's not, if it's five years, it's five years, if it's ten years, it's ten years, if it's whatever, it's whatever. And we're seeing ten thousand dollars, we're gonna set that number, and that's what was left in the agreement.
Let's just look at the agreement and see what we've agreed to.
I might suggest that that be designated to go into the interest-bearing account with the bar.
That makes sense. Yeah, I think we have access to it.
Mixed in with the cemetery funds, yeah.
Yep.
Second?
Mixed in with the cemetery.
Yeah.
Funds.
Maybe it'd be a separate accounting, but.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all, it's all tracked separately, but at least it would then have a chance to gain a little, hopefully not have to be using it first few years, and so let it accrue some additional growth.
Might make twenty-two cents.
Yeah. Bro, rather than spend a lot of time, I'd just make a motion that we accept the ten thousand dollars, and it's part of the original agreement, as we've accepted.
Well, I think, there has to be some.
Here's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Danny.
Okay, in the agreement, under section one, subsection three, it says, "The Friends agree to pay for all the installation, operation, maintenance, and repair of the brick sidewalks and sidewalk lighting system, including but not limited to the electric utility cost of sidewalk lighting system." Four, subsection four, "The Friends shall establish a capital trust fund in the amount to be determined by the Town Board of Selectmen to cover the cost of ongoing repair, operation, and maintenance of the sidewalks and lighting system." And five, it was an installation issue, and that's, that's what it says.
It doesn't have a duration.
There is no duration. It's an ongoing, apparently an ongoing obligation.
If that's what it says, that's what it says.
Well, that's the agreement, that's the agreement, and we agreed that we would set a number, and they agreed that we would negotiate that number, and ten thousand dollars. If it's a seventy-five-year thing, who had, nobody should have any issues here. We're all gonna be gone.
Some less similar than others.
Speak for yourself. More than likely.
Is that, that agreement, is that what the board is holding on?
Yeah.
So that's the legal one.
Okay.
If anybody's certain of this, please. All right, so. So we agreed to accept the ten thousand dollars, and when it's, when it's gone, it's gone, basically?
Well, we accept the ten thousand dollars to be held in trust, to do any maintenance, and there it is. Plus, I think, in the very near future, there'll be something in ordinance to make sure that we're covered legally, but that's gonna be discussed at a, at a future time.
All right, the propos, the proposal is.
This, yeah, this, Mike, I know you wanna go ahead, this basically completes the agreement, and we, we set the ten thousand dollars, and to open a can of lard and go back and have to renegotiate contracts and everything else, and put it before the voters, they accepted this based on a second motion, so we're gonna get one on this.
We don't have a motion on the table yet.
Yeah, he did.
I made a motion to accept the ten thousand dollars as, which finishes off the agreement, which was the only thing left, was we had to set, the select board had to set a number, which they would then fulfill.
Danny?
Also, I think what the proposal was, was should that ten thousand dollars be gone, anything beyond that, unless, that was for a ten-year period, I guess, maybe that's.
That was for the ten-year period, figuring, the town would have their own repair costs that we are mitigating by this, this installation.
So maybe that doesn't, it's just the ten dollars.
So, on that agreement that the taxpayers all holdin' on, does that state ten years, or does that state?
It says no, it says no duration, doesn't have a.
There's no, there, there, it just says, "The Friends shall establish a capital trust fund in the amount to be determined by the Board of Selectmen for the ongoing repair, to cover the cost of ongoing repair, operation, maintenance of the brick sidewalk and lighting system." So that would be an ongoing capital reserve.
Okay.
It's, the thing with that is, basically, legal, I had it checked, legal said it was a perpetual agreement. And the number, the only thing that was left was, we had to get a number, which we, we thought was gonna be a much bigger number, and ten thou, it sounds like this is a really great installation, based on what I've just seen here. I can't foresee, unless somebody plows something out, that there would be any real issues, and probably the last, like we've seen, except fifty to seventy-five years.
Howard?
I, I guess my question would be, kind of operationalizing this thing, eighteen years from now, the ten thousand dollars has been expended, and there has to be some repair work done on the sidewalk. Is it being picked up by the taxpayers, or by the Friends of the Village?
The agreement, the agreement would say that the ongoing repair, under item four, the Friends agree to pay for all installation operations, maintenance, and repair of brick side sidewalks, including but not limited to the electricity cost. And the trust fund is to essentially be established, to help ensure that, that there is funds available for repair.
Correct, but as we've said, this has been accepted by the voters, and I guess I'm trying to get an opinion on.
Well, if there's no money in the account, currently, under this agreement, it seems like, if I'm not reading it incorrectly, seems like the Friends of Belgrade Lake Village would be responsible now. Having said that, if the Friends of Belgrade Lake Village is no longer in existence, and there are needs for repair, that's a different issue. But that's a subject for a future debate. But that's what this agreement is, is between town and the Friends of the Belgrade Lake Village. The, 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 things, things, things should be fine, and I've talked a little bit with Danny, and we've had a little bit of a discussion about an ordinance, that all has to be checked out. There's no sense in me even really going there.
Yeah, the ordinance that I was, Ernie and I were talking about, just to fill that, fill that in a little bit, is an ordinance on snow, winter maintenance issues. In other words, snow plowing and stuff like that. And I think I've referenced that to you there.
There's nothing to do with the duration. What bothers me is that, what we're proposing is to keep them on the hook in perpetuity forever.
Well, the thing, the thing is, we're gonna, we're gonna have ten thousand dollars, and it's gonna be in a trust account, which I'm assuming comes to the town. And we're gonna put it, it's just like with the cemetery fund, these, these funds tend to produce quite a lot of money and grow, so at some point in the future, potentially, they may decide to use just the earnings to do maintenance, and just leave the thing continue to produce money to take care of the sidewalks. And if they dissolve, or whatever, that's an issue we'll have to cross in the future. You can't, there's no way to project the future. This looks like a great project, solid project, a lot better than what I, as an individual, thought it was gonna be, based on engineering and stuff, and, and the communications that I've had with, well, with Ernie for example, stuff, this, this sounds like it should be fine for the taxpayer. And the town will benefit from it.
Ken?
The trust funds that we now have invested in the unified trust account, were there initially, generally speaking, except for some of the cemetery money, through the donation of generous individuals over the years. I haven't heard anything that suggests that this fund couldn't be added to by individual private donations, specifically for Belgrade Lake's sidewalk improvement, if somebody chose to do that down the road.
The thing, I think, again, I know we're kinda getting off track, but you could potentially have, expand on that trust fund, and have it like a cemetery trust fund, which is a perpetual thing, and then you could use some of the growth in that for beautification of, other than just the sidewalks. But I mean, that would be something that could be addressed, if you had more monies coming in. We, we have these things set up, and it's a great way where people that have substantial resources sometime like to make a donation that's gonna contribute to, like Belgrade Village, or anything. So, I mean, there's a lot of options here.
Just to clarify, the Friends are going to establish this trust fund, and it'll be in the Friends' control, as I understand this, am I not mistaken, until you turn it over after a period of time? Or wouldn't it be established?
I thought we were turning it.
Okay, now, then I raise the question, that's not needing an answer, I'm sorry.
I thought it was.
I mean, and I don't know that we were prepared to do anything until completion of the project, and then we would have that, that amount of money.
That was the understanding.
I just wanted to try to clarify something I didn't need clarification.
I would ask the Friends, let me just ask, hey, ask the Friends, how does this latest wrinkle sit with you, can you live with it?
We're gonna get this project done.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
The thing is, I think we should have a discussion with the Friends when it comes time to accept the money, and to make sure that you're comfortable if you put it, because it goes into our investment accounts, it would be, it's still a separate account, but it's handled by the same people, but it would still be for the, for the Friends that have had operation up there. So, and if you wanted to expand on that, I think it's an opportunity to use the resources that the town is using to invest their dollars to support different projects in town that go on, ongoing, so it's just, just, it's just another wrinkle to throw in there.
My, my problem with this is that I think it's fundamentally unfair, after all they've done, and all the money they've raised, to ask them forever to keep filling that fund for us, which is basically what the proposal is, that you would do that, when the fund, if we need more money, you would pay the bills. Ten, for ten years, that's one thing, but for how long? You know, this, there's no endpoint under this, under this motion.
Well, we should have addressed that.
I, I guess I would add my two cents, while throughout talking with the other community members, that if we don't do the brick sidewalks, they're gonna be asphalt sidewalks, and the town is gonna be responsible for repairing them, and that will be, the town would have to do any of the repairs out of whatever, however, whatever funds you would designate. So, what, what I guess my thinking is, is we're, we are saying, we'll pay, we're very confident that this is gonna outlast, outlast asphalt, be a substantial improvement over asphalt, it's going to save the town money that would spend normally with an asphalt sidewalk. And we're confident enough to say, we'll give you ten thousand dollars, and you can keep it, and let it grow, to be able to hopefully work off the interest when the time comes. But being responsible for repairs, when the town would have to pick those up at some time in the future, picking them up in perpetuity, sounds like a big ask to me. And then, my other, my other question, the town voted to accept the money, did they vote on, did the town vote on the contract, or did the town vote to accept the money?
I believe it, I believe it was nothing.
So that, that's the other piece, is that I don't know, the town voted on the contract, they voted to accept the money, and that may just be a legal.
I believe that contract went, that contract went before the town tipped us also.
I believe that contract went before the town also.
Was it, okay, the, the whole contract?
The one that, one that he was just reading from, yeah.
The town voted on that?
That's my, I believe so.
We're gonna get some clarification here.
I may have brought the abbreviated version of the article.
While he's looking at, looking that up, I just wanna add, a lot of these sidewalks that we've talked about being maintained, they don't have the residential capacity that you have, meaning, most of those sidewalks that Kent talked to, they follow their own roads. So they damage their own brick sidewalk, they damage their own curb, and they do media work in the spring. The only thing that I just wanna put to you guys as a town is, one of these commercial plowers, private plowers that are plowing individual homeowners' driveways, what's their liability if they go in and take out a roll of bricks? Because in the wintertime, it's like a bed down through Belgrade Village in the wintertime, and they got plows up behind the sidewalks, pushing snow here and there. So that's the only thing that my concern is, is building this, and then in the first winter, then you have these residential plowers, commercial plowers going and just wreaking havoc with these brick sidewalks, and then who's left repairing them? That's one concern I have. First one is gonna be a total learning curve for everybody, but that first year could also be disastrous, if not paid attention to. I just wanna throw that out there. I don't wanna give you guys false claims on that it can live through, we can't fix stupid.
Well, let me just go to the article. "To see if the town will vote by secret ballot to accept a conditional gift of funds from the Friends of Belgrade Lake Village, a nonprofit corporation, for the purpose of funding sidewalks and pedestrian lighting for the 2018 road construction of Route 27, main DOT highway construction project, that number, in the amount of approximately four hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, to accept additional funds in the future for necessary maintenance of such improvements, which I would assume is this, to establish a Route 27 enhancement escrow account to hold these donated funds, and to appropriate and spend such funds for the purposes described herein." Okay? So I think it does include that particular provision. So, the other thing I would say is, whether it was intended or not, I think the article is, I mean, the, the agreement is pretty clear, and, and it may be unfortunate, I mean, I think that it's one of those things that perhaps in writing it, people weren't thinking longer term, and it happened to end up, the interpretation. So, but it is what it is, and tonight, I think the proposal was to accept the ten thousand dollars. All of that other stuff, I mean, it's an issue that you folks have to contend with, and it may be an issue we have to contend with in the future, but right now, it's, it's a pretty clear kind of issue to confront for us.
I, I would think that the only concern, if I was you people, was after hearing Ernie about fire, that's, that would be my only concern. If I, you know, because ten thousand dollars is not gonna go. If I, you know, because $10,000 is not gonna go to power.
Why wouldn't it be totally appropriate for the select board to identify the fact that the, any damage done to the sidewalks by residential plowers or anybody, is their liability?
Wouldn't it?
And communicate that to the, to the homeowners along the way, they're gonna be affected by it.
Could've liked getting somebody to plow the driveway, I can tell you that right now.
Well, then that's...
I mean, there you go, you just threw the dinosaur out, I plowed commercially. If I had the agreement like that, wouldn't be plowing. You can't. I mean...
Who's responsibility should it be?
Yeah, but I mean, I've plowed commercially too, and I mean, if you take out somebody's tree or somebody's lawn or something like that in the springtime, they're gonna come to you and say, you damaged this.
But I'm not gonna pay for a sidewalk, that's for damn sure.
Well, no, but I mean, but if it's part of their property, it falls under the same heading as if you tore up their lawn. So I mean, that, it's kinda between the plower and the...
I've never had to fix a lawn yet either.
I think the issue, the issue that Mr. Martin raises is one that begs the question, who owns the sidewalk? Because if a commercial plower is coming in the driveway, plowing the driveway, if it's a public sidewalk, then he's plowing over a public sidewalk, the homeowner wouldn't have any, potentially, I'm not a lawyer, but it sounds to me like, if it's a public sidewalk, there wouldn't be any liability.
They've been doing that for years, I mean, they've been plowing over...
Unless you could impose that by the town.
No, Kerbin, I used to plow with big plow trucks, the town. Kerbin, I've taken them over for you. It happens. A wind gets over there and just rips it right out in a matter of minutes.
All right, where are we?
Seconds.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just one final thing. Is Mr., there you are. Any experience with plows? Because it can't be the first time this issue was brought up.
Well, I just asked Ernie if they've had any damage in O'Gonville since we've been through a winter. No, I'm really not a, of the works guy.
Yeah, I think, I think the only thing that you guys are doing is something that has never been there, you know, so guys that plow driveways, they're not used to it. And I was just talking, ten is, we can also, where you can have brick sidewalks, we can make the tip downs, as we call them, as they come across the driveway to bring the ADA compliant. We can make those batuminous instead of brick, because if you make those brick, those are the first things that are gonna get popped. So we can maybe circumvent that a little bit, but just making the sidewalk itself brick and then the tip downs are pavement. Unless, of course, it's at a side street, then you're gonna have to have the ADA compliant tip downs. But I think the intent here is we'll make the, we'll make the tip down, we'll talk to the Friends, but it might be in everybody's best interest to make that pavement to alleviate it. I'll tell you right now, if you make those tip downs brick, that, that first season, the plow guys just gonna hammer the hell out of you, they're gonna break all apart. But I, what I would recommend to the board is to develop a sidewalk ordinance related, related to the sidewalk, even though you guys don't maintain it, but in the best interest for insurance reasons, I would definitely create one.
Well, that's essentially what we, I have been thinking of, is developing a sidewalk ordinance that would include winter maintenance and who's responsible for that, because you know by law, if we don't have an ordinance, then the town is responsible. So we have to make that clear.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, and I would think that, you know, to some degree, it would fall under the same heading as if somebody took out a guardrail plowing or something like that, it's, it's in a public way, it's, whether it's a sidewalk, guardrail, a tree that, you know, or something.
The state goes after their insurance company for that reimbursement.
Yeah, and I mean, if it's town property, then, you know, the town should do, do something similar.
We'll have to work out that sidewalk court.
All right. Where we are is, we accept, we accept the bricks, we accept the $10,000, the question is up near the duration. I would suggest, hopefully it'd be acceptable to the Friends, that the select board will work with you to come to some equitable solution to that problem. What?
If I just, I think it's pretty clear. I'm not trying to challenge what you're trying to do, and I understand what you're trying to do, but I think the agreement's pretty clear. I don't think, you can, if you accept the fact that the town voted to accept this, then I think it's pretty hard for the select board unless you go back to the town. That's all I'm saying, I'm not trying to challenge.
Motion, re-stake your motion, please.
Motion is to accept the $10,000 as a trust fund to, for maintenance work on the sidewalk.
Need a second. Any other discussion, or we talked it to death?
We talked it to death.
Basically, we just wanted to set the number, $10,000.
Call the vote, all those in favor?
There, finally working her.
Thank you for, well...
Thank you.
All your efforts.
Well, it's good to thrash it up.
Yeah, it is, it is. Why don't we thrash a little bit further so I can go?
Okay.
Good evening, Ernie, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Just take a little break, yeah.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
We've got another hot one coming. Gordon.
Whole pack.
Yep.
Well, it's not real...
Well, I got a question, boy. Boy, fatherless.
Well, I thought it was a little bit... I was on, I'm on the same page, George, with that stuff.
My question, my answer, the whole thing.
Well, that's good.
You don't accept any liability for any damage you do when you're plowing?
Not very often.
You don't even replace mailboxes?
No.
Just drop them right down.
That's right. I've hit a lot of mailboxes blowing snow. It's what it is. I, I've had, I've hit a cow once, had to do something with that in a building, but as far as lawns.
Personal house off the foundation, two feet.
You know what? The customers I've had have had probably 25 years.
And they know he's not gonna pay.
That's right, they know he's not gonna pay. He's had the price of power going way high, and so figure it out.
They figure, but Rick Damer, the legal...
Yeah, my house, two inches off the foundation.
You know what I'm saying? They say they're gonna call a lawyer. Go ahead, I said, tell them to stand in line, and step right after me now.
They might ask you to go on the other side, push it back to them.
I even filled a guy's driveway once. He didn't pay. I mean, I filled it. Yeah, we're also, can we get back on going now?
All right.
Walker's gonna be on shot, right?
Municipal street ordinance.
Municipal what?
Did you ask me to, I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah.
There are two issues that have come before us, and one of them had to do with a parking complaint down at the Lakeshore Beach parking area, and the other has to do with the road closure request. Now, you know, we close roads all the time for parades and stuff. On the main highways, they do it through the state, on the smaller roads, we, I believe we've done it in the past, like the cemetery road, just because we've done it. The state requirement is for any of that stuff to be able for you to do that, you have exclusive rights for street and that kind of thing, parking and traffic control in terms of developing an ordinance. You have to go out to public hearing, but you can do what you want, essentially. But you have to have an ordinance. So if you wanna establish, if you want to be able to go after a parking violation at the beach parking lot, you can go ahead and do it, and you can say, Denny, put up a sign down there and tell them that we're gonna tow the vehicle, but the moment you tow that vehicle, if there's a challenge to that, that puts the town liable. So the same way with closing a road, you can close a road, but if someone were to get hurt during that road closure for whatever reason, we are, without an ordinance, opening up the town to some potential liability. Now, how great that is, perhaps small. So what I recommend to you is that we develop as a part of the current road and street ordinance that we have, which is essentially how to build a road, is to add two sections, one on parking and one on road closure policy, and that I work with the road committee to develop, so that then we can bring back that ordinance to you, so that we could do that. But that's, that's where we're at, and I know that some folks don't necessarily like ordinances, but sometimes, but sometimes, you know, in order to protect the town, there are legal requirements we have to meet, so that's, that's where I'm at, and that's what I'm recommending. The street closure, by the way, just to go forward with that, Mr. Howes, who oversees a 5K run every year for a fundraiser, I believe, has requested that we close a portion, three tenths of a mile, of the Minot Hill Road for about a half an hour on July...
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, I believe it is, yes. And that was the request that came to me, and I told him, I bring it to you folks, and there we go.
I think we've been doing it for several years anyways.
Not legally, though. If something happened, then we might be, the town would be exposed.
Well, you could certainly do it again.
I mean, this vehicle still can get through there, that's, that was my concern when we talked about it the first time, and it's...
But we can work out an ordinance and bring it to you folks, and you pass it, we don't have to go to the town, you certainly hold a public hearing, but you pass it, you have the exclusive right.
Can we go back to the parking run for a minute?
Sure.
How many complaints have we had? Just one person?
We've had it from the recreation committee, and I don't know if that's one or all, the entire committee.
It's just one person. It's not the, I didn't know it was coming to you guys, when it came last time.
It's just that one person's complaint, correct? That's all I've ever heard.
To me...
Well, that's the only one I've heard, yeah, told, it's the same name.
Is there a letter that came in here?
Yeah, from the same guy.
There was an email describing the situation.
Is there no parking sign the fire department puts out, by the hydrant, legal?
They're not, they're not enforceable.
Unenforceable, somebody parks there, they can't pull the car out of the way or anything.
Correct, and we're having that issue now.
I noticed it today, new signage.
And that vehicle's been parked there every day.
So covering parking, covering parking would, that sign would...
That would protect, that would allow us to tow or whatever.
Something like that's certainly a safety issue.
Being on a state road, the town would be able to enforce that?
Yes, because the municipal, they have control of the traffic within the town. Trap parking. They can't set speed limits.
I think, I don't, I don't see the select board enforcing this thing willy-nilly. It'd be a very restricted situation. We're not gonna put signs up all over the place.
Are you not gonna have main car? I'm certainly not gonna go down.
But situations like that fire department sign, you know, the hydrant deal, and if the beach comes a problem, that, that's the kind of thing we're talking about.
Talk about problem enforcement.
Very limited, but you still need the ordinance to do it.
Well, you have an, you have the ordinance.
And a state law book back in front of the hydrant.
They can endorse.
I can show you how to get through there.
But the state can put up, the state can put up, no parking sign if they want, they can enforce it.
Yeah.
I'm talking about municipal law.
So somebody's parking with it?
If it's on a state highway.
Little silver cars.
Just drive up there with the truck and you come and pull it down.
See, that's the problem.
That's the, that's the issue, I mean, anything that we have to do with municipal street and road ordinance.
Can we ask you to draft something and bring it back to us?
Well, certainly, I mean, I've worked with the board, the road committee, to draft something, come back. I actually submitted a draft in an email to you that I pulled from a small little town out in western Maine, and I kind of just substituted the term Belgrade, and it was very simple ordinance. I can do the same thing on road closure.
Okay, I would make a motion that we ask the town manager to do that, bring it to the first meeting that's available. You ready to bring it to us?
They have a road to any meeting next week, so...
May I have a second?
I second the motion.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor? Caris. Thank you, sir.
One opposed.
One opposed.
One not voting, right?
He's opposed, he can't not vote.
I'm opposed, but I also understand that if you're gonna put a sign up, and to be able to do anything about it, you gotta have an ordinance.
But I think you're still gonna be in a mess, but that's fine, we'll...
We'll make it simple as possible. We'll make it as simple as possible.
I know, until you hook onto that cow, then let's see what happens.
Well, that's the...
We know what'll happen if you hook onto it now. Town's on the hook. Anyway, okay.
It's stolen. There's ways out around this one, man.
All right. Next item. Post stock outboard racing event at the Center for All Seasons.
So Sean Grant came to me and told me about stock outboard racing, which I'd never heard of before, and that they used to have them in Great Pond in the sixties.
Correct.
And it's something that they had talked about possibly bringing back to this, to the town. It would be a three-day event. And anyways, Sean's here to answer all your questions, and he can answer way more questions than I can answer. It's just not something that I was familiar with, the Center are hosting, so I wanted to have you guys listen in and give your opinion.
So this was last done in the sixties, soon?
Then, then I have found, yeah.
Fifty years ago?
Yep, that's right.
Do they have engines in there?
They did, as a matter of fact. That was the year of my birth, the last day I could find was sixty-two. Yeah, they were motorized.
I imagine all the Great Pond has changed a bit in that time, we have a lot more people living on the lake, a lot more boat traffic. How many competitors do you see?
Sixteen to twenty competitors in any one of the events, probably total of a hundred racers and their, and their family and team support, if you will.
But there'd be a hundred people participating one way or the other at this time?
Right, you know, there would be different categories, you know, junior stock, which is actually the, the sub-sixteen category is the largest racing category they have. And then there's, you know, D-stock, Hydro, and et cetera, et cetera, a number of different classes. There'll usually be four to five, six boat racing per class.
I noticed there was, you've got several towns in here in Maine. Is that, any of the other towns agreed to this yet?
Um, what do you mean?
I noticed on the list of where the races are gonna be, there were several towns, and one, I believe, was Reed Field, um, yeah, it says, well, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's regatta race dates. That's what this is?
These are the dates of repair, it's not labeled, so you don't really know, is that from nineteen sixty or is that current?
Is it the last page of the, yeah, the last page was just a little, a little word from a, from a magazine back in the day, and it was talking about the schedule for the APDA in the northeast, right.
What, what does the fuels do to the lake? I guess that's one of the concerns I've got, because we used to have ice racing out there right in front of the old season, and they stopped that because of oil and gas and, they just got too involved, so they just, Alliance Club used to do it.
Well, I think you find guys that put this kind of money and effort into their recent efforts, you know, they don't have oil leakers, they don't have fuel leakers, they've got time, money invested, they're coming from Massachusetts, Pennsylvania to race. These guys are vested in their hobby.
Where is this gonna happen on the lake?
It would happen in the cove where the center is, the Great Pond Arena, et cetera. We, we had members come up this winter, walked out on the ice, took measurements, and we can get a safe course out there.
You gotta maintain the, the safety zone, right?
That's correct, yeah, but the APDA dictates a safety zone, they dictate the number of rescue boats.
State of Maine dictates a safety zone, too.
That is correct, right, and the South Shore Outboard Association is quite familiar with working with them, and they would take care of the state permitting. We do still have races in Standish, we are about to have races again in 2018 up on Flagstaff where they hadn't been since the seventies. There is a, there is a push to, to bring hydroplane racing back to Maine. It was a, it was a really big thing, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, and they're looking to expand their, their schedule, and I was looking at, you know, my advertising efforts for my bog yard, you know, it's, I, I, print, paper, radio, it's a waste of money, so I'm looking hard, I spent $3,000, you don't advertising, what can I do? Well, I was sponsoring a race event, and here we are.
So these are hydroplanes?
They are. Outboard hydroplanes, that's correct. Running nine to thirteen feet in length.
They used to do that on Kennebec, and you did some in Marina Cook Lake.
That's right, Gardner had them, yeah, they still do with Standish once again. I was just at the races a couple weeks ago, actually.
I tell you what troubles me about that, the area you've got selected, because you've got the marina, you've got the state boat... You've got the marina, you've got the state boat launch area, you have the stream, and you have the thoroughfare, you know, around Port Sound.
No question.
All converging in there. What happens? Does that mean that people on the lake won't be able to use the lake?
Not at all. There's, I realize it seems like a small cove and particularly from when we stopped and just kind of think about that cove as opposed to go out there and look at it from the standpoint of on the water or on the ice. There's a lot of room there and we can easily maintain boat traffic to the east shore of that cove, maintaining the launch and Great Pond Arena. And there's all kinds of room to get to the stream on the, on the north end of the designated course, what we would designate as a course.
You're gonna get a permit from Fish and Wildlife for this?
That's correct. Again, South Shore Outboard Association works with them and are very familiar and they take care of that.
What, what kind of noise level is it? Is it quite loud? I mean, I haven't been to one.
Well, you know, there's certainly a buzzing sound.
Buzz.
Well, I mean...
We get complaints about a band playing, so.
Yeah, I mean during the day, this won't be a midnight thing, right? No.
Hold down.
I'll be a little tricky in the house.
Just, just as a question, because we were just talking about parking and I know we have problems parking at the Center for All Seasons when we have major events there. So what kind of parking, numbers of cars and other parking?
Well, you know, I, I gotta admit, I'm not really sure of the type of numbers. I have no idea what we'll get from the general public.
Well, you'll need, you'll need parking for people that launch, where would they, where will they be launching their thing? They all have trailers, right?
Yeah, they all will have trailers and dollies. We'll go down where the docks are at the center and launch them.
So you'll launch them right at the center?
Right, yeah, right. Right on dollies. We'll wheel them down through. The parking lot is more than adequate for the number of racers that come.
Okay, so the racers will be in the Center for All Seasons parking area?
That is correct.
Okay, so, okay.
Well, actually, it might even make sense to put some of them up in the little picnic area along the lawn there. Have some people stage down through that. Cut the distance to the launch point, you know?
Blanche?
We often, when we have events, we'll park people up on the outside basketball court. That would be perfect for...
I'm not, I just was...
Yeah.
Because I don't know, how many observers? What you're gonna have are observers. And right now, if you get a wedding there or you get a major event like a town meeting, you have people parking up and down the street there and yet we only have like a hundred and fifty, two hundred people at those events. All I'm saying is, I'm just thinking about parking, is that, that is an issue we have to ban it.
The boat launch would be used too, probably for people packing, assuming, because quite a lot of room on that boat.
The boat launch is, it's, it's around the lake, so you're not, people aren't gonna park their cars there and walk over to the center.
No, but I'm saying if you're gonna be there, you can watch the race from right there and you can still see it.
A number of spectators are gonna be in boats, I'm sure.
In boats.
Maybe, you know.
But they still have cars.
Well, but they might be coming from the house.
How they launch using that way?
Just an issue, just an issue.
And it is a huge issue for the center.
I'm not pouring cold butter on it.
Do you have any feel for the number of spectators you might expect?
I wish I did, because it'd sure make my life a lot easier on the...
They do, they...
I can't imagine more than a couple hundred per day. I just can't. I mean, it's...
It's gonna bring a lot of revenue into the town for the stores and businesses in town. That's one of the big things that's gonna come up.
They're gonna stay.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Jack.
I just wondered here, if I could forth on this.
Well, that's all right.
If before the, the town makes a formal decision on this, the residents of the, particularly the residents of that area around the lakes will have a chance to get word of the fact that this is under consideration and be able to weigh in before the decision is made.
That's, that's a possibility. The other thing that bothered me tonight, Sean, is that there's so many things you can't tell us. You know, you know, if there's a hundred spectators, that's one thing. If there are four hundred spectators, that's, that's another thing. And if word gets around, it could be, you could have...
So how would I manage that? Would I have to shut off at a certain number? Because we're obviously right out on the side of twenty-seven with ten thousand cars a day and God knows how many are gonna see a sign up front swinging it. So do I shut off when we, the gate is at, you know, three hundred?
Perhaps on the Standish, we say, you're still doing it?
Well, yeah. Then, once again, I went down there and walked around and there was no more than, there was no more than a couple hundred people there. I will say it was a cool weekend, too. So there was almost no spectators. It was almost all racers, you know, there was maybe fifty or seventy spectators.
It's just racers. It sounds like it wouldn't be a big problem, but the unknown. The unknown is the number of spectators and what they would do to the property.
That's right.
I know you don't allow, don't allow drinking, but I've never been to a NASCAR race where somebody didn't have a bottle of beer.
Oh, and I would, I would certainly ask for the, the privilege, if you will, of serving beer and wine at a dinner on, say, Saturday night. Nothing during race hours or anything like that.
So you're planning to have a dinner, that's part of this whole deal, at the center?
That's correct. Yep. We'd like to do a dinner, meet the racers kind of thing. Have, you know, I would sponsor a dinner that would feed the racers and then people could meet them and just, you know, trying to get some interaction between the, you know, the racers and the general public.
Danny?
Well, all I was gonna say is we could look into what happens on the Standish. I could call the, the officials down there and talk to them and see what their experience is and bring that back. When do you need an approval by?
Well, we're, we're, right now, they've held every weekend in June open for me and I think Valencia has done pretty much the same for the two thousand eighteen schedules. I've got a little bit of room, but amazing how quickly that's been going on.
So perhaps at the next...
Valencia, what about this church group? Because they're gonna be up working on it, doing it on Sunday.
On Sunday morning, I mean, they would be in the center on Sunday morning, right?
Right. Well, we could work around that, sir.
Yeah, so you can always use...
Now, what is their time, you know? What's their timetable?
Nine to one.
You could probably hold it up. Nine to one? Four hours.
I would, I would, I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to see you, I'd like to see you fill out, whether you have the, the required number or not, I'd like to see you fill out an application for mass gathering. Because it addresses things like parking and security and, and all the things we're worried about.
Sure.
Obviously, it's a, it's a valuable piece of town property. We'd like to see you have your race, but we don't wanna, we don't want damage. We don't wanna, and we don't wanna alienate all the, all the residents in, in the area. So I, I would like, I would like to see that. I don't, do you see a problem asking for that, Danny?
No. The other thing to not, again, out back at the fire station, that old parking area, that's probably something that we could still use, Bruce, do you know? The cool bones, I know why you couldn't.
Yeah. We can name the fire department as well, or maybe we don't need to with the town name, I suppose.
I think Bobby Henry could help us out on some of that parking open behind the fire.
Right, that would be good.
Because that goes to the golf course.
Is the center a separate corporation or is that...?
The center's a town, town owns it. Fire department. The fire department, the town owns the fire department, so the problem.
There's another piece out back there with us.
With a fire pit is?
Yes, that belongs to...
And I have to the golf course.
The golf course.
The other thing, too, in the, the thing from the last, last year's, last year's regatta mentions the ambulances and EMTs and all, where are they coming from?
Good question. We'd probably look to Delta. I touched base with the fire department briefly. There seemed to be support. They are available. There was reference to their boat possibly being made available. There's obviously a minimum of two boats provided by the South Shore Outboard Association that was referenced in there. Because they, by their, the APB, they're sanctioned by APDA. They have to provide a number of things, and that being, you know, the required number of rescue boats, the required number of trained people. And, and just to throw out there once again, all these racers are licensed. These are not guys that can just buy a boat, show up on the weekend, you know, they're trained and they're licensed and what they're gonna do.
But stuff happens.
No question. Always, people get killed in NASCAR. Didn't want you to think it was a willy-nilly, shit shot operation, you know?
I don't, I'm not thinking that, but anyway.
Well, I, I think we just wanna have all our Ts crossed and eyes dotted in terms of safety and, and, you know, and public usage of the lake in terms of, like you say, on one side. Like Michael was saying, there's, you know, there's a lot of traffic from the marina to the outlet to the, you know... And to build upon what Jack said, I think, you know, we're gonna have to address the, the local property owners that maybe are gonna wanna know about this before, you know, we just say, sure, go ahead. But we have time to do that, so.
What do you, what do you think of, what do you think of having a, I don't know if it's gonna be a formal hearing, but some sort of meeting for people to attend?
We can set up a meeting for any interested people to attend to discuss this, if you would like. I mean, that's certainly. I don't think it's a requirement.
I know it's not a requirement, but I think it's...
But I think if you wanna communicate with the community, certainly.
We wanna, we wanna be cognizant of the, of the, we wanna be considerate of the local people. I'm sure you do, too.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, this is about, you know, promotion of my business, not, not here to make enemies.
Yeah, sure. Can you, you have a sense of the kinds of questions we're interested in, what we're concerned about?
The mass gathering ordinance, I assume, will, will, the application will outline those questions. It just sounds like so. I'm more than happy to get one filled out for you.
Okay, give it some thought, so we have some, as close to concrete.
Well, I'll speak with members of the South Shore Outboard Association, get some spectator numbers from them based on, you know, size of the towns. We're what, seven thousand in the summer? No?
The maximum we can, the last time I did the calculation, which was seven years ago, the maximum based, based on housing units available was around seventy-two hundred, something like that. I don't think we've increased in number of housing units available that much.
So I'm sure you're not extrapolating from that.
Maximum, so probably seventy-five hundred.
But you'll probably be drawing from that.
Again, the Route twenty-seven is the part that, I, I don't, not exactly sure how to wrap my mind around that because there's just so much flow from there.
Yeah, I don't know, you can't. And it's a busy time of year, too, the end of June.
And what I'll do is I'll talk to Standish. Is there any other towns that you know of?
In Maine? No, right now it's Standish and...
I think, you know, put that together. I, I, I for one, I'm not ready to, to vote on this until we have some more answers to these questions.
Sure.
So I don't know how the rest of you feel.
That's the way I feel.
Okay.
I mean, the only, the only thing we've really got control of is the season, the, all seasons. The lake is not our lake.
No.
Questions I've got pertain to what's gonna happen at the Center for All Seasons. Yeah, I do, I am concerned about the lake, but that's not what we're, that's not what we're doing.
We can't, I guess...
We can be concerned about...
What's going on on our property.
The crowd that's gonna be there, what the parking's gonna be, what the security's gonna be and all that other stuff. And that's, that's what I need to have, I need to have answers to.
Yes. How's that work on rentals at the center for any rental?
Normally, I...
Security, crowd, you know.
Is alcohol being served? Then there's a, there's a specific contract that has to have security, has to have license and insured bartenders and bouncers, a staff person. But if some, if he just came in and said to me, I wanna rent the center for a Friday night dance, picnic on Saturday and serve alcohol on Saturday night, I'd have him fill out the forms and I would come there. I'd just do, I would make all those decisions if he had not told me what he was doing on the lake.
Danny?
I don't see how, I don't see how, if you're doing that, that every, how can you...
I don't have a complete problem. The only other ordinance that would impact this is the mass gathering ordinance.
Right.
So that's, that's where I think the majority of questions are coming from.
If you fill that out, that'll answer a lot of the questions, the problem questions. And I'm personally not against this, but I just wanna make sure that the town's protected.
Of course.
Anything, anybody else?
Will be on the construction at that time for the twenty-seven project?
That was...
Well, that's, so that's one of the, that's one of the reasons that we...
It'll be done in June, it'll be shut down.
Right, that's why we gave it to you.
They'll shut down in July, so you...
No, I thought it was after Memorial.
Yeah.
It starts in the summer.
It's, they said they're gonna, they're shut down for two months, July and August.
July and August.
I thought that they...
Put it right through and get it done.
Anyhow, that's something we can check out certainly, but I thought it was July or August, too.
And I thought it was after Memorial. You told me about earlier in May.
It is after Memorial. No, it's only, because that was the concern of the, of the business people.
Yeah, they're gonna lose business.
In fact, they weren't gonna shut down at all and we convinced them they had to shut down. They agreed to those two months.
I think sometimes you do.
Two months to shut down. July and August.
So that's when they're gonna shut down, right during the busy season.
And that's the reason they shut down, then?
Yeah, they're gonna pave it and everything, just to wait the month.
It'll be, it'll wait.
Till traffic can get through.
Whatever.
Baby, stop my job.
Kick that in, maybe nobody will show up.
I'm sorry?
Maybe nobody will be able to show up.
No one.
Let's control the crowd.
All right, see what you can do with that application.
Yeah.
Get it to Danny.
Will do.
And we'll go from there.
Excellent. Thank you very much, the town guys.
Thanks, guys.
Come on, old pig leg.
Still worried about you?
I am.
I can still kick, you know?
That's what I'm worried about.
Thanks, guys.
See ya.
All right.
Warren.
Warren number seventy-three. Five hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions were made?
Second?
Second?
Almost forgot.
Discussion. Anything, anything, guys?
I didn't have anything.
I didn't see anything.
How many, how many?
Well, I had a question. Spray application. It's called ticked off. Is that, does that kill the ticks?
Yes, and...
Oh, is this the one?
Yeah, that was used during the memorial celebration, memorial around that area so that people coming have less ticks.
So they actually have one.
Spray. Yeah.
No, it's just good because I have some trails, if it wasn't too expensive.
No, they're all natural.
How many outfits do we have disposal contracts with?
Disposal contracts.
Garbage.
Oh, you mean people that haul?
Well, I notice we have one here from Riverside Disposal. I haven't seen recycling. I haven't seen them before.
Yeah, that's the one up to the...
That's the one that hauls or demolition or whatever we...
Shingles.
Is it shingles for them?
Yeah.
Isn't it all, the center's got that one, too, don't they?
No, they have, the center has one, too.
I thought Bruce was sneaking another one in.
Oh, they got a rib on it.
Maybe I do.
They got the one out of Augusta.
And I have one other quick question. Tri-state flag. Those are the flags, the American flags of the Braves?
Yeah.
What happens to them when they have to the ceremony? Do you leave them there or do they rot there or do you take, pick them up?
They get picked up after and stuff.
Do they get reused?
That's what I'm...
Okay, how do you dispose them?
They go to American Legion.
Okay. There, there's a, that's a question that I, I have noticed flags in the trash before and people try to pick them out. I know Kenny did and I know people before Kenny did. The question I have is, do people know where they can dispose the flags? Because I have flags that I would like to get disposed of properly and we should probably advertise that somehow.
The Boy Scouts used to do it, but I don't know.
Yeah, the Boy Scouts just do it. The American Legion doesn't.
American Legion.
The Oakland ones, one that we take ours.
Okay, and then there's the veterans. Do they do it?
I don't know if the veterans do. I know that the person that, Jeff Stevens is who we give.
Okay, I'm gonna talk to Jeff because I think it'd be great if we get these disposed of properly because there are, even these little flags should be disposed of, right?
Flag's a flag, not as big or little, so.
Well, that's why I gotta find out where they can go first, that's what I'm saying.
Any other, any other discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Thank you, gentlemen, and it's up to you there.
Okay, I've got just a few issues to bring you up to speed on and you may have to vote to use capital reserves on a couple. Okay, E nine-one-one. Apparently, E nine-one-one is going down as it relates to Fairpoint sometime between midnight, two, whenever they think can. We, we had to have a Fairpoint line, telephone line, four-nine-five. It affects the four-nine-five number, is what I understand. We disabled the fax in here. The only line that we have is Fairpoint, is the fax number. So we disabled that. I went home and got an old-fashioned phone, not digital, that my wife had because she knew that was gonna be needed. And we put it out here, and that's how what we're trying to, that was the phone call, we were trying to get it set up. Well, actually, the phone call was because someone tried to submit a fax. Wait till tomorrow. Route eight, I know there's been a lot of questions about Route eight upgrade. I've talked to DOT. My understanding is it's going to go out for advertisement and bid November seventeenth of twenty seventeen, and it should be worked on next summer. The appraisals have been done. We have a portion of property that's affected by the appraisals. I didn't go to the meeting with them, so it's just, they're going to do what they're going to do.
They must be surveying it now, because there's a guy walking that whole road with a map.
Yeah, because a lot of property, the people own the property right through the center line, the state's only got right of way, that's the problem.
There was a problem with the right of way, that's been the problem for the last year or two.
RSU eighteen is going to reestablish the cost sharing committee at desk for the, the people that were originally on the original committee to be reappointed. I think you've already done that at a meeting, Gary, when it first came up. You, you can appoint, Gary and I were on the committee, so if you want to appoint Gary and I again, I think you'd already done that, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't remember.
Gary told me that you guys have reappointed.
Gary says a lot of things, at least in Montana.
So I would ask that you reappoint.
I'll make, I'll make that motion, reappoint those two.
I'll second it. Hold in favor? Consider your sample.
Okay, the, I've had a number of the issues that Cavestone had agreed that they would do, taken care of. There was an issue that came up in the bathroom in here, it's installed, the bathroom door in the men's room is on the toilet, is it all upside down, and they're going to come back and fix that. The, the, the spring loaded levers, I don't think it makes much of a distance, a difference, so what that brings us to is handicap access. There was seventy-five hundred dollars put into a line item for handicap access lawn and, and curtains. And the curtains cost twenty-eight seventy-two, that gives us somewhere around forty-eight hundred left in that account. The estimate is six thousand dollars for the handicap pieces themselves. The installment would be somewhere up to fifteen hundred. Danny told me that he could reduce that if we had Gary install, actually do the installment of the pieces, and they do the electrical work. So I don't know how much that would be. We have the forty, six hundred dollars that's left, our forty-six hundred and twenty-eight dollars left over, plus we have twenty-one hundred dollars in the reserve account that was established in the spring, this warrant article, where you split the cost between, you split the sale of foreclosed property revenue between two accounts, while that was facilities reserve account. So that would be where I draw money from, and we look for money in else, other spots that we have available, if they're not expended. And if we had to, I'd come to you and ask for the right to use some of your seventy-five hundred dollar emergency funds, but I don't think that'll be necessary, but that's just there. So I would ask that you allow, would authorize the expenditure of reserve, out of that a reserve account, the capital facilities reserve account.
Can we get an exact price? I mean.
Well, he, he told me six thousand dollars for the parks, and roughly a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars for the installation.
So you don't have enough money, though?
Well, we have, we have enough money for about sixty, sixty-seven hundred dollars worth of work, so I'm hoping that, that we'll get a, the amount left over will be not that significant, six, seven hundred dollars.
We're both the account that the rental dollars go into.
We can.
Facilities maintenance.
We can certainly pull money from that account too. That's forced facilities maintenance. I hadn't thought about that, so yes. Do you want to use that rather than the reserve account?
Well, I think the reserve account was initially established so that, I think with in mind that we're looking at potentially a new fire station.
Okay.
Those would be reserve monies to staff working to build that pole money. I, that was my thought.
Is that, is that the only price we got on that opener? I mean.
Danny was the one that did the pricing. I mean, I looked online, Danny did the pricing, he said he picked the lowest of the two prices. I looked online, the cheapest I could find online, no installation, but just the cheapest, was twenty-three hundred dollars per door. And Danny says you could buy them online, we'll install them, but the warranty is, you get what you pay for online, so I don't know what that means, because I know nothing about these things. So I, I just accepted Danny's normal pricing.
How many, what doors are you talking about? The two front doors?
That's the two that I understand you're talking about. At some point in time, because we use this as access, you may want to do that, but we can put that into the budget.
Did you talk to the guy when he was here today, put Justin O'Shensys?
Steve?
Yeah.
I did, I talked to him right before he installed.
He's coming back tomorrow.
To fix the.
To work on that door some more, because it squeaks bad.
Well, I think, yeah, I know.
The trouble is that when you open it up, the wind caught it, it opened the door right up. So he tightened them up a little bit more, and he said, see what everybody thought tonight when they came through, but he's going to see in the morning anyways, just.
He also has to fix the.
Yep, he said he's coming back to do that.
It's all upside down. I, I opened that door three times when I was going to the bathroom, and three times it fell.
Really?
Yeah, well, maybe because I'm lifting up on the.
You could have just stopped being so rugged around that bathroom.
I don't know my own strength, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Howard. Question, this door back here was the one that was supposed to be designated as handicap accessible, right?
Yes.
They're, they're all, well, I don't know.
That's my question, is are those two ADA compliant?
No.
No, only that door out there?
Well, if they're not ADA compliant, other than the, other than the electrical, I mean, the mechanical opener.
That's why they're not ADA.
That's the only reason?
Yeah.
Their distances and their spacing and everything, and their width and everything is all, and everything approaching.
It's all set.
The sidewalks approaching it are?
That's my understanding, yes.
The fact, the fact is, that door is hardly ever used, except when we're doing election or something like.
I understand that, but, but the, are there ramps out here on the sidewalk for?
Are you talking about the slope is, the slope being the proper slope? That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, because I mean, putting the, if that doesn't, if they're not totally ADA compliant, then putting the door openers on that door is.
Well, my understanding it is, because the building was designed by a professional engineer, obviously, you know, you have your opinions, I suppose. Having said that, we're having questions. We have people who've come and can't get through those doors easily, and that's, that's a, an issue that we're trying to address with these handicap door openers. Now, you're bringing up an issue about this door, it's the same issue I was talking about. We can get, we can look to the next year's budget to get money for that door. Right now, my understanding was those were the doors that we were looking at to provide handicap accessibility.
I thought it was the back door.
People, people are complaining about.
Yeah, that's what those doors are, very hard to open, but.
They're not now. He's got them so they can open pretty.
We put the spring loaded hinges on today. The question is, are they sufficient to resolve that problem?
He can loosen them up more, he tightened them up just because the wind was blowing, just to.
Well, that was the other issue when I talked to the contractor. He said, the door probably should have opened in the other direction, because right now, when the wind comes up, it's going, it's going right open.
I think the town manager should stand at the door and open it for people and welcome them in.
I do that, because I have no, I have no time to do anything else. I have to get paid for something, but I do, I do accept tips.
No, read it first.
Okay, so.
I'll make that motion, I guess, and.
Okay.
See where we can get the money and let us know, and then we'll finalize everything.
Second it.
So I, I will authorize him to go forward, find the money. I'll let you know by email how much money is going to be pulled from our pots.
Another vote on it. All those in favor? Four zero.
And drive a hard bargain.
Yeah.
The sidewalking, the crosswalk striking is supposed to be done by July fourth, it's been backed up. Because of rain, it was actually supposed to come in a couple times in the last week and a half, but he just has been backed up by rain. So he said it will be done by July fourth. There's an elected official workshop on July eighteenth, Ernie Birkins, did you want to go to that? I'm going to go to that. You can write up with me.
I'm planning to go to one, but later in the year.
Okay, that's fine.
There's a local one, I believe, in.
There is one in Augusta.
Augusta.
It's in November, it's in November. I thought you might want to go to one.
Well, I just, I just can't go this time of year.
Okay.
Like, a little busy, something?
Well, then, I can wait. I mean, I just thought you wanted.
Yeah, I talked, I talked to Gary about it some time ago, and, you know, because we were going, he wanted to go, and I said, well, you know, I just can't go now.
Okay, so we'll both go in November?
So I just thought, you know, I, I might find a time before November to go, but the.
There's only one other one before November.
They're all up in Caribou or something like that.
It's not a bad, right?
They're all over the place, so.
Well, we're.
He's coming right out.
You all got the brownale moth information, and you've heard about some more towns that have found it on TV? We didn't report ours, but we were the first one before those towns came up. And that was brought to me by the, by the Gold Course, Jenny, I can't.
Marge Evans.
Evans.
Marge.
Marge, yeah, yeah. And I did check it out, they are, I took pictures of them and all that. There's not much you can do this time of the year, but I'm, I'm going to be talking to other towns to get a packet of information together that we can prepare, so we can tell, tell people what to do.
When to spray.
When to spray, if they're going to spray, or how to cut the things off. Because, but the problem is, most of them, with the brownale moths, they'll do it at the very tips of the branches, which are generally higher up, so it's hard to reach them.
Yeah.
So there is the. But we'll, we'll fill people in on that. Jay Bradshaw wanted me to say that, to tell you that there's a vacancy on the Board of Appeals, and if you know of anyone, please help him.
Who resigned?
I don't know, I, did you know, I, but he just, he sent, dropped a note by, he didn't tell me who, he just said, there's a vacancy. Would you announce it at the meeting tonight? The, Don Briggs came in on the water. The water problem that we have in the facility here is primarily a pH problem. The bacterial problem is no longer an issue. The pH problem is because you go through this reverse osmosis unit, it takes virtually everything out, even, even minerals that would normally help buffer, so you don't get too low in pH or too high. What he has to do is add in some valves, so that he can then add in some chemicals to adjust the pH. He will add in some of the stuff that's taken out on a regular basis, so to adjust the pH, drop it down to the six point five to eight point five, where it's supposed to be. And he was supposed to come in this week to do it, something called him away, but he did come in and take what he needed, to get what he needed. He said to me that he's on vacation next week, and I said, hopefully I'm the first one on your list when you come back, and he had a thumbs up on that message. Not knowing what that meant, I assume he's going to come in.
They were drinking anyway.
Is that all covered under the initial price of that project, that filtration project?
What you mean?
What he's going to be doing next?
My assumption would be it is, but I don't know for certain. I'd have to look.
I just, my, my question is that, but when I bid on that, mine had a neutralizer in that price, so that's why I just questioned if it's.
Okay, I'll, I'll check with him. The two heat exchange units on the ends of the buildings, apparently some ice and stuff fell off and hit. The only thing that we can do is put some kind of a.
Ice break.
Ice break on it, because, above it, or put something that's over the unit, so that it doesn't, when it hits, it hits that rather than.
They had a, it's basically just a shield that's put right on the unit, and it protects it from stuff falling on it. So it's not, that'd be very.
The wire design.
Okay.
It's a metal, piece of metal, yeah. Come look at mine.
Okay, right.
Right in the van.
And, let me see. The only other thing I had is I'm, I'm, I'm going to be putting out a request for an experienced town clerk and deputy treasurer to help us make sure that we have coverage. Our problem now is it's not working. And Cheryl's, the agreement we have with Cheryl is up at the end of this month, and apparently Kerry had put enough money in for a position, and so we're looking for someone in the seventeen to eighteen dollar an hour range. We'll be putting that out. That will solve my coverage problem for both Melanie. When Melanie goes out, we had to bring in someone to cover for Melanie to do the payroll. She can't do that, but it helps back up her, and it helps give these folks some relief, as well as, as, with the experience they can get training as well. They're doing, these guys are doing a great job. I'm not criticizing these folks at all, it's just that we're short-staffed.
Yeah.
And it's almost all the time, and Cheryl, you know, she's, she's, has some of her own issues.
Yeah, she's at the end of that one.
So with that, I welcome any questions that you may have.
Well, I had a couple of questions in regards to that, so.
Yeah. We have three full-time people, okay, right? We have one, we have a treasurer, yes, and two clerks, right?
Neither one of these people can be clerk. You can designate them as clerks. They're, they have to be, to be certified, you have five years of experience, right?
I think that's, when I looked it up, that's one way to do it. You can, you can kind of rush the process a bit too, that's just the way that most people do it.
Well, it just.
You don't have to be certified.
It looks like we're going to be back to four full-time people out there.
Yeah.
And I did a little research, town green, population forty-three fifty, they have full, three full-time people working in front office, tax collector and stuff. And of course, they have a town manager. So there's four full-time people. And over there in Sabates, which is forty-nine hundred ninety-one, almost five thousand people, they have town manager, treasurer, tax collector, town clerk, four full-time people. Turner, which is six thousand people, a couple of years ago, they actually do have five people, but they got six thousand population. So my only concern is, how long are we going to have four full-time people?
Well.
Is this a temporary thing, or, because I think hiring a part-time person to cover, to backfill these people would seem to be more beneficial, and I thought that was the route.
Well, that may have been the route, and that may be the way, if you want to go that way, we can try it. I would say this, we have Melanie who has, experienced as a clerk, but she's growing in her treasury role, and we have no one being able to back her up. We have two people out front that have less than a year experience each, all right? And you have a town manager that isn't doing the front stuff, and there's a number of other things that the town manager is doing. So I'd say that hiring the clerk, hiring this position, gives us plenty of capability to, to back up people when they go out and stuff right now, which is a kind of a difficulty. The other thing is, we moved from the town office, if you want to look at the filing system, you can look at the filing system. I can't find anything. I need to get the filing system in order. If you look into the vault and all of the records that we're supposed to keep in the vault, they're not in order. We need someone to, we need time and a capability to bring that stuff back up to speed, if it was ever up to speed, to tell you the truth. It's been a problem since I, when I was a town manager back in two thousand six to two thousand nine, that's why we were trying to get people to actually work on that stuff, to build that up, and get it in acceptable condition. It's just not there. And I'm going to tell you, I try to find stuff all the time. You can ask Anthony, or you can ask any one of those folks out there, where's this? There's no central filing capacity right now.
I don't, I don't, I don't.
So we have, so how long it will be, I'm sorry, just to finish up.
Yeah, I don't have any question about that, Danny, at all. I don't question the tools, but, you know, you say the treasurer. We have a new, we now, everything now is on Trio.
Yeah.
Which supposedly ties everything together, and you can do all kinds of reports.
Yeah.
So I just, I just hate to see us expand the front office to a size, and once you make somebody full-time, they're full-time. And when do you get rid of them? Because now we don't really need them anymore, because, I mean, to me, it's like, I think we should be calling these people and finding how, how they do it. And if we need to get our files in order, there are people who can, we can hire to come in and actually do that. You know, but.
The way I look at it, we, we hire the town manager and an experienced town manager, and I don't think anybody can question Denny's experience. To run the town, to be the personnel director. If he tells us he needs another person, I think we need to listen to that. He's not asking us for any additional money. Am I correct?
No. The money was there, currently, for whatever reason, she, she kept money in the position, her position.
Asking for an additional person who will, will work and will perform a needed function, I think we need to do that consideration.
Well, I, I hear what he's saying. I know Cheryl, if she was needed, would be, so, and if you had a part-time person, that person could cover whatever. And I just think that, you know, you just, and you hire a full-time person. I know what the plan was when we went forward, it was going to be a part-time person. But that's, again, the other town manager.
I did talk to.
I respect your thoughts.
Yeah, I did talk to Melanie about this as well. And so it's not like I went in and came in and said, oh, we need to, I did get her thoughts as well. I understand, I understand the issue, but right now, it's, we need, we need help. And that's where I'm at. Certainly, whenever the position, whenever these folks get up to speed, people don't last in towns forever. I don't expect Anthony or Nick to stay here. I mean, we have our, you know, we have our issues, even in hiring people, because some towns offer more than what we offer, all right? So there's that issue. The last time she put out a request for a part-time person, we got, no, that Melanie, that's it for backup for her. We got one person with no experience in terms of. We got one person with no experience in terms of actual municipal experience, but she did have payroll experience. So we brought her on a per diem basis with the idea that we would train her into some of that. She ended up, her boss apparently said, I don't wanna lose you, come on back, we'll make sure you stay with us. So that's the difficulty of trying to bring in per diem people, or even, I don't know what, what we're gonna get when we put out a request. I have no idea what we're gonna get. We may not get any. That puts us in a bind, but we have to, I think we need more people out there than we have right now.
We may have a better chance of getting somebody, too, if it's a full-time position as opposed to a temporary or part-time.
And I, I hear Ernie's concerned. I, I wonder, I'll probably talk to Kerry about it, but I wonder why there was money left in there for essentially a full-time position.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I mean, I just kinda wanna address that, 'cause it makes it sound like I'm gonna jet at some point.
No, 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 I'm not.
I mean, I'm currently working the houses in Dog Creek, so this is where I...
No, no, I hope you don't. I didn't intend, but you never know how long it's gonna be.
Right, right, I understand.
That's all I'd say.
You never know what opportunity's gonna come. That's right now, this is the plan.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
And that's the case no matter what, what the employment is, you know, I mean, whether it's private, private or, or government or whatever, always a chance somebody's gonna go somewhere else.
Get to better yourself, you move on.
Yeah. I mean, it...
But you never know, but I, I'll tell you, it's difficult, it tries, and...
I would say it sounds to me like you, you know, you've got a case for a full-time person, there's money in the budget for it. You'll get better applicants for a wider range, we hope, you know, by doing that. I would just, you know, to echo a little bit of what Ernie said, is, you know, go with that, and then, you know, once the files are, are updated and everything is clear and so on, then maybe, you know, next year we can reassess. You know, these, these guys will have more time under their belt, so on and so forth, you know, maybe, maybe we don't need a...
Well, there's always the opportunity to reassess and...
And like you say, somebody could leave, and then we're back to three anyway, so there's no harm done.
Right. For that matter, we could have a reduction for us if we no longer, the job is no longer there.
It's always a possibility.
Always gonna stand up there.
What's a temp service cost versus a full-time employee?
Well, I know you pay, I know a temp service employer, and they pay a premium, I mean, a premium.
Because you don't, you don't have any of the other benefit costs that they cover, that's not the guys how they cover it, but I'm just wondering, if you've got specific tasks that you feel like you're under the weather on right now, get those taken care of, but are you gonna still need the, need the extra person?
Wow.
So would a temp service be a better...
I don't think a temp service would provide the type of people we're looking for personally. I can look into that, but I don't think that they're gonna provide...
For doing filing and...
It's not just filing, it's the whole range of work that a clerk and a deputy treasurer would do. It's not just filing, it's municipal experience in all of those areas. Quite frankly, I'm trying to look for courses right now with Trio, and I'm trying to get some coursework behind me as well, 'cause that's what I said I would do. I haven't been able to contact Trio, where they can back me, I've left the messages and the emails into them, but that's the other part of this whole thing. But I don't think you're gonna get a municipal experience with temp service, because you can't, you can't...
I thought you had a couple of specific things you, thought you were under the weather on.
I mentioned the things that we are under the weather on exactly, but we need backup for both Melanie, we just don't have backup.
The fact, the fact is, you didn't have to come to us at all, you've got the money.
No, I, I wanted to...
You're doing this as a courtesy to us, and we appreciate it.
No, I wanted to let you know.
You're doing it as a courtesy, you're informing, but so you have a right to go out and hire what you need to run the town.
Yeah, but you like to get the input from your board, right? And the backing from your board. It doesn't help, it doesn't work. But anyhow.
Just stating what the requirement is, Kenny, you being a nice guy and telling us about it. Does anybody object to him going ahead?
No.
No.
I do.
Three of them.
I appreciate it. Well, I appreciate it. I understand where Ernie's coming from, I really do.
There is, are you done?
I am done with my update.
I got something that I think we ought to do. Have you seen the chair Danny sets in in his office?
I have.
That is the biggest piece of crap there ever was. We need to come up with some money and buy him a chair, or give him the permission to buy one. I mean, that's not even good news, bad news.
Economically, it's incorrect. I'll, I'll fix it.
We need to give you the okay to get one, I think.
Yeah.
It's my opinion.
Yeah, I'll get a chair, I, I get it.
No, you need to go purchase a chair.
I will. I'll get someone to come in and do their economic thing.
Well, because you, I mean, you're, you're gonna be able to back in, I mean, you flock over that chair.
Well, that's my plan.
I know you've got all in days now.
Well, these chairs would be better than what he's got right now.
That thing is terrible, I'm telling you, I think somebody robbed his chair when the...
They can't be that expensive.
Chairs can go far, $400, $500, $600.
Well, we're not, we don't want you that comfortable.
Well, you'd want, you know, like something with a really high back, magic fingers.
You know, two cup o' this, sort of a throne type thing. But I'm, I'm, I'll make the motion to give him the okay to purchase a chair.
I'll get a chair.
Okay.
And I'll go down.
Not to set us, geez.
I'll take her. Did you sign the warrant? Is there anything else to...
There is one.
Is this something I need to sign? I see this.
No, that is, I don't know if you had a chance to see it before, I believe that is the county budget, and it was an opportunity for you to look at the county.
I know, that's a waste of time. You ever been to one of their meetings?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You can call me at one of the budgets.
All right.
Call me next week.
Let's send the motion to adjourn.
I will make that.
I'll second it, okay, all is in favor, now I'm like, I'll, I'm like, oh.
I got an answer.
Thank you, sir.
Hello? I'm in a meeting, but... I can talk to you for a second.
Those folks really should...
I changed tomorrow night, I can't make tomorrow night, so you get to it like the day is yours.
I understand where you're coming from, but that's a pretty hard class.